As long as they're all on all six, I think.
Call the town council meeting to order for Tuesday, July 23rd at 7:06 PM. Start first with salute to the flag.
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Doody.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Here.
Councillor Candolora, absent. Councillor Diamond.
Here.
Councillor Fawnan.
Here.
Councillor Miller.
Here.
Councillor Rose. Councillor Viglio. Councillor Zampiano.
Here.
Motion to approve the minutes of July 9th, 2019, Water Pollution Control Authority and Town Council.
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections? Roll call.
Mayor Doody.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councillor Diamond.
Yes.
Councillor Fawnan.
Yes.
Councillor Miller.
Yes.
Councillor Zampiano.
Yes.
Moving to the regular town council meeting agenda.
Mr. Mayor, before we go into it, I would just like to make a motion to amend the agenda. The first amendment is for item 9M, capital purchase for public works, for the purchase of a compact tack loader.
Track.
Track, oh.
Track loader.
A compact track loader.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Doody.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councillor Diamond.
Yes.
Councillor Fawnan.
Yes.
Councillor Miller.
Yes.
Councillor Zampiano.
Yes.
I'd also like to make a motion to add executive session for the purposes of discussing pending negotiations between the town and the administrators.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Doody.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councillor Diamond.
Yes.
Councillor Fawnan.
Yes.
Councillor Miller.
Yes.
Councillor Zampiano.
Yes.
And moving back to the regular town council's agenda, it's reports of committees, boards, and commissions, Economic Development Commissioner.
No meeting.
Park and Rec Commissioner.
The July meeting has been canceled.
Police Commissioner.
Police Commissioner had a special meeting on July 15th. Just note a few items. They discussed plans for the swearing and ceremony for the deputy chief. They approved a policy for the car video cameras, and they approved a biking fundraiser benefiting the Smile Cancer Center, using some of our roads and following our requirements.
Thank you. Fire Commissioner. Board of Education, Town Council, Communications Subcommittee.
We met tonight prior to the town council meeting, and actually, it was the joint committee between the two to discuss the high school feasibility study. There were four bids that came in below or around the allocated money. We formed a subcommittee to review those, form questions, to go into interviewing those four committees, and our next meeting will be July 31st.
Thank you. Town Planning Goals Subcommittee.
No meeting.
Planning and Zoning Commission, opposed text amendments.
Yeah, the town planner had put together a report on some of the activities with respect to the amendments that's in your packet as well.
Next is.
If there are any questions to that, Carrie is present.
Next is East Shore District Health Department. North Branford Police Department, Facility and Town Center Advisory Committee.
The committee met last week, continuing to work with the architect of her plans. The property will probably be staked again, and I think it looks like a two-story option is probably the way that committee is going. The next meeting is August 14th.
Next is Town, is the Finance Subcommittee.
We met tonight to start gathering information in regards to negotiations with the administrators.
And now moving to Town Managers' Report, Support of Central Coast Coalition, Five Town Economic Development Collaboration.
Yes, I prepared a memo for you, just to give you some background on where we are progressing with this collaborative, and the five towns of Branford, Durham, Guilford, Madison, North Branford, coming together to brand and market and promote economic development among the five towns is coming along to a point where the other four towns have already contributed and looking to North Branford for its contribution. For the consultants, which there is additional information on Miranda Creative of Norwich as a consultant. This was done through a lead process through the town of Madison, who went through the selection process, and so they're looking for $3,000, $3,000 to pay for their services, which comes up later in the agenda under contingency appropriation.
Thank you. Update on North Branford Intermediate School, proposal from Frank Capasso and Sons for exterior brickwork.
Yeah, so as you know, I've been working on this for quite some time. I would say that Phase One, the interior, or Phase One of the roof and HVAC system, we're pretty much at the end of the road there, where the building is now dry, with rare exception occasion from a directional rainstorm. We do have reported leaks every now and then, but by and large, it's been, it's been dry and problem-free, and the extra step is looking at the outside of the, the building, as I mentioned, the brick mortar work, brickwork, and potentially windows. So I met with Bill Chody and called in Frank Capasso and Sons, the local company, and also looked at the auditorium to come in with her proposal on the exterior of the NBIS, and as you can see, that the estimate there is, is quite significant. Not sure that, how we want to proceed, other than maybe a, a limited approach for this with respect to just the northern side or the, the rain events that we have, and some of the windows, rather than the entire building, but again, that's not my.
So this, this cost is for the whole building?
Whole building.
And this is NBIS?
NBIS, yes.
Not the, because when I saw that number, I was.
Yes.
I thought it went from 155, but that's the auditorium, which is totally separate.
Totally separate, right.
So.
Are there, are there other companies that you could talk to? I mean, I can't believe that cost.
Well, it would have to go out to bid.
Yeah.
This is just an estimate.
Right, absolutely, right, right.
For.
Yeah, we just wanted to get a scope, an idea, and it's a, it's a rather large number at 300, I believe, 325,000.
350.
350.
Yeah, so, you know, I'm not in the building trade or anything, and this is very technical in here, so basically, what are they talking about doing?
Oh, yeah.
And I, I know it's.
Yeah.
Repointing and, is this, does this all have to do with the whole discussion that we had several years ago, a bit, and what was it called?
Rake joints.
Rake joints?
Rake joints, yeah, that's part of it, yeah, yeah.
That we did rake joints, and basically, this is kind of fixing what we did when we built it, or?
It, it, it could be. I'm not, I'm not sure that, that there's conclusive evidence that, that there was a problem, that they did, they did it wrong with rake joints or not, but they're looking at, you know, the issue, when you look at the building, all of that grime coming off of, of the black soot and so forth.
Right.
We do, you know, I think there, there may be some issues with ceiling, ceiling around the windows as well, and then now just the, the age of the building can be showing some of the, you know, the cracks and stress within, just aging. So I think this is a, a cleaning ceiling and repointing, I'd, I'd have to, you know, I'd have to rely on a person like, you know, Fran or, or Al or someone to, to help narrow this scope, and then decide if we want to go out to bid or not.
So is this maintenance or rework?
Oh, this is, this is more of a structural rework, I, I think. I, I, I don't know, maybe I'm wrong Fran, but I, I think this, I see it as not, not maintenance, it is more of a structural.
Oh, Bill Chody's here.
Because that, that was a point of the whole building, yeah. So what they did when they built the building, which it was controversial when they did it, they raked the joints out. So what they do is they, they rake them, and they're in probably about a half an inch or so. So there's a shelf in the brick. Usually you don't rake an outside building like that.
Similar to what you do on inside, when you do a wall inside, yeah.
And, and they used to put a 45 degree angle in there, so you didn't get the water to sit there. So I think what this is going to do is they're going to repoint the whole building, so they wouldn't have to, I don't think, yeah, so they, they would do a little cutting probably, but they would actually bring the joint all the way down to the front, so it gets rid of that shelf where water, ice and stuff would be sitting there. And that's, you know, and then, and then seal it directly. They will seal the whole building, so you don't have that water penetration, even though there's drains built into the back of the brick, you know, and it's going to.
Basically, what happens is it gets in there, freezes, and it pops the face of the brick off. So you have one brick face that goes in, you know, half inch.
I'm actually surprised it hasn't happened already.
I'm not sure that, that they're talking about doing the whole building. It says repoint mortar joints at select locations. I don't take that to mean the entire building.
It says select locations. Yeah, because, because he did a general overview of the building, he really did not pinpoint anything for us to look at, but he's saying that most of the building has this issue.
What, what's an allowance of 500 LF, linear feet?
Not much, is what it is. I'd say when you look at a whole building.
Yeah, because it's 500 linear feet of joint repointing at locations determined by the owner.
Yeah, so they're not doing the entire building. They're saying, you, you show us where you think you got a problem, and we'll fix up the 500 linear feet.
Elsewhere, it says, clean, clean the entire building.
And seal it, but.
Removing all stains, dirt.
The big problems that Franny seems to be highlighting is that the entire building was built this way, so the whole building really needs to be done.
I, I agree that the, what they got back, right? I'm just saying what I.
No, I, that's fine. But from what you're saying, we don't need select locations, we need the whole building done.
I would, I would do that.
I think maybe Fran, Mike, and, and Bill should be with Capasso on scene, and, you know.
I can't, this is just a, a estimate.
Yeah, Bill, could you just come up, could you just come up to Mike?
Basically, what you're looking at is his, his view of what he found. That's, that's why you're seeing, there's no quantity, there's, there's allocations for, for certain work. If you see the spec that we had put together for the auditorium, you see quantities rather than allocations. That's how, that's how it was pinpointed. One was done by a professional restoration engineer, and the other one was done by the contractor, just walking around the building.
So we don't know if it's a total repointing of all the brick?
We, if, if we'd like to, we can meet again with, with, with the contractor and have him show us specific areas that he had the greatest concern with.
Yep.
And probably go in that direction.
I mean, that, I'm sure us sitting here don't know a thing about what you guys found out, and how much money we're talking about.
Right.
And, um.
I was, I was actually asked by Michael that, well, if we're looking at the auditorium, should we be looking at the other building? And the, the, the vendor was, was willing to look at it, and that's the report that he wrote. So that's his report.
Yeah, I, I think I'm just looking, you know, to throw this out here that, to, to make you aware of it, because we've obviously had a, a significant allocation already to do the HVAC and the roof system, which we've done successfully, and we've made great progress in, in getting to a point where we're relatively, you know, dry, dry building, and the air, air pressure and, and the handlers and the systems are working, and now you have a contractor for maintenance on the roof twice a year, and you've got the contract for the HVAC system itself. So the mechanicals and all of that are taking care of itself, but I, I, I think this is the final step. It's just how much can we afford to do, and how much do you, do you want to do, and I think that's what.
So do we have a problem with the brick?
We, well, we do on that one, is it that one side, like the side that faces the tennis court?
Yeah, it would be the east side of the building.
That's the side that faces the tennis courts, baseball field?
Yeah, that would be the east side of the building. That, that's the one that gets the most weather, and that's the one that has the most signs of issues on that side of the building.
So what's happening?
Uh, like Franny had said, the way that, the way the rake joints are made, and, and like the, the mayor had said, and he was absolutely right, the water is, is building up there, and eventually, what it's doing is it's breaking out the mortar, and it's breaking out the, the front of the brick face. Now, is it all falling down right now? Absolutely not. This is somewhat of preventive maintenance, something that on a 10-year-old building, you might want to be looking at.
But some of it might also fix, we don't, we don't know, but it seems when there's driving rains and whatever else, you have more leaks on that side of the building.
We, we have issues on that side of the building, yes.
So it may also correct that problem. We don't know until we do it.
Yeah, and, and until you investigate it for a, a little further, sure.
Yeah, if you could re, if you could re-inspect that with the crew, and, and get the feeling, and just make sure, you know, that they're going to repoint, and then seal it afterwards, or seal it later, depending on how long it takes the repointing to set up.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, just come back to us.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Moving on, next is Moody's latest credit overview.
Yeah, just wanted to bring the council up to speed on the latest Moody's Investor Services rating for North Branford, which is a very good credit position at AA2, which is slightly exceeds the median rating average for cities nationwide. So that with the Moody, I mean, with the Standard and Poor upgrade, I think we're, we're a pretty good story to tell financially.
Thank you. Next is review of purchasing ordinance. The reason, the reason we brought this up is because we had a discussion after our last meeting that we had, and Rose brought it up. We, the school had to put in a pump, a water pump, and I guess it went out to bid. The pump cost $25,000, $26,000, and the bid came in at $50,000.
Those are approximate, I mean, it might be off a little bit, but approximately.
And basically, what happened is it went out to bid, and whoever bid on it, this is just for a part, they doubled it. So our concern, my concern, I expressed it at Town Managers, we're buying ventilator units for the school system, ventilation units for the school system, that our own employees are putting them in. The pump, our own employees put it in. Why are we going out to bid for parts when our employees are doing it? I could see us going out to bid for the whole complete job that way, but I can't see the town spend twice the money that it should be spending for a part when our own employees are doing it. So that's my concern, is how do we go around it? Do we just violate it and buy the part, or is there a way, and that's my question to the town attorney? Is there a way that we can just buy the part, and as long as our own employees put it in? And we're going to be, going to be approaching this with the new HVAC company for the intermediate school, which their parts, they're up, they're upping their parts by 20%.
25.
25%. So we're, we're going to be fighting this for a long time. How do we buy parts, and just parts, and, and we do the labor?
Yeah, I, I, I'm sorry to say, I think the short answer is you have to amend your ordinance, because the town manager, purchasing agent, and I met actually on that issue with the ventilator, the ventilators, and I appreciate the, the issue, and each part in isolation is below your threshold, but your ordinance specifically does not allow you to bifurcate your purchasing to avoid the ordinance process. So unfortunately, I can't recommend that you just go ahead and violate your ordinance, because your ordinance is an ordinance that was put in place by this body at some point in history to avoid concerns that the town had. But by definition, the purchasing agent has the authority and is due to purchase, and the definitions for what we want to get, the supplies, the materials, the equipment, or other commodities, the ordinance is so broad that includes everything that you would need to get by way of spare parts to fix. So on the one-off where it's just one ventilator system that falls underneath the threshold, there's no issue. But the problem was, since I was told that there's, I think, a dozen or so, a dozen or more systems that are going to be upgraded, I did not see how, because my, my immediate reaction was, well, can you buy a part now, and then a part next, you know, like buy parts as you need them? But we felt that since that violated the spirit of the ordinance, since the ordinance specifically said you cannot get around the ordinance by splitting up your purchases into a series of purchases, we thought that, actually, the town manager and I and the purchasing agent thought that's something we should bring to this body's attention, because we felt there needed to be more flexibility in the purchasing opportunities for the reasons that you've articulated. And that's, that's, I think we find ourselves now in, in this, in this moment that highlights part of the problem.
Well, see, years ago, when we'd have specialists, we, now we have certified HVAC and people that are town employees, certified plumbers that are town employees, they, they're specialists, so that we don't have to go out to bid on the whole job, we just need to buy parts, so that, that's.
That's the, that's the problem, is even your definitions in, in section 84-4 prohibits the acquisition, the purchasing of even parts unless it's below the, the threshold limit. And again, because of the multiple number of units that were in need of upgrades and those parts, I didn't see how I could get around looking at it in isolation as one, and then two, and then three, because I was being told from the origination that the intent is to upgrade everything. So, you know, I felt that it violated the spirit of the ordinance, and I was not going to, you know, recommend that we should be violating our ordinance. So I think the appropriate process is to amend the ordinance to allow for these situations where we're buying parts, because I believe we have a similar situation in that, in that ventilator upgrade system, where we have a, a vendor, where all we're doing is buying parts, and they actually don't buy, through their common practice, participate in the public bidding process, because all they do is sell parts. They don't provide services to municipalities and whatnot, but we, we felt, since they were the only one that we felt we could get these parts from, that we needed to still, we could not avoid this bid, this, this ordinance, and we'd have to work with them to try to get through that process. But the recommendation would be to modify the ordinance.
So, so on the unit ventilators for the schools, they put it out to bid, and there were no bidders?
Right.
Okay, so, so, so then what do you do if no one bids on it, but there is a place that is making, could make them to the, there's very specific specifications? And Bill, can you just come up so that we can, since you know more about this than we do? But, so the unit ventilators, and I, I'm just going to talk about TBS, because I know that those were the ones that you were looking to purchase. They're very specific, right? They're, are they being manufactured specifically for the school, or is it a stock item?
They would have to be built for the school to our specs, for the size, the areas that they were going to fit into.
Right, so it's.
You, you already have something there, and to replace it with something bigger or smaller creates more problems.
Right, because you have to retrofit, and that's when you have.
So we're looking for something that fits in the hole.
So, so is there any, is there any provisions for a sole source provider? Like if, if, you know, if no one bid on it, we can't just go purchase the parts because it's a sole source provider?
Right, I mean, we can look to see if the, the vendor is on the state list, and whether we could avail ourselves of 84-11, which allows for a state bid purchase. So we discussed that. We discussed the piggyback option that we had recently amended the ordinance to say, hey, does anyone else that, did they, anyone else go through the public bidding process, and we can piggyback on what they did to get what we needed, but because of the specificity of what we were in need of, that was not an option. And so we, notwithstanding how much we efforted to, to work through this issue, we kept coming up against the obstacle of the ordinance and the limitations of the ordinance. So we, the only way that we could work through it is to amend the ordinance. Otherwise, our hands were tied.
Well, isn't there sole, there's sole source in our, in our budget, in our bidding process? I, I didn't see that.
We didn't see it, in the, in the.
But, but does the absence of someone responding to a bid constitute a sole source decision? That doesn't sound right.
No, but they're specifically made by one company for North Branford.
Other companies can make a unit that would fit there.
Okay.
But no one bid on them. The company that we're, that we're currently looking at is, is a company that we had used in the past, and we were very successful with their product.
And, and this gave the ventilators, we, we rebid and strongly encouraged them to bid, and they did. So we have a bid that'll have for, for you on the 20th pending review, but in, in the situation with the, with the, with the pump or some other situation, yeah, we, we want to amend the ordinance to say, listen, if, it, it doesn't make sense, if we, if we have a quote, and, from a, from a supplier or a parts person, but they don't, and unlike this one, like the ventilators, they don't, they don't have, they don't necessarily get into putting bids together, and we have, good on the street, and one bid comes back with whatever numbers we're using, the, the quote is at 40, and the bid comes back at 50. Well, it's either cancel the bid, collapse the bid, and, and rebid, or do we, should we have language in the, in the ordinance that say, to that bidder, you can now match that, or we're going to go with, with that source, and I don't know if we can do that, that's more of a legal question, but.
I mean, because the, you know, the issue, I believe, with the pump at Jerome Harrison, was the, the company that won the bid never touched the pump, was my understanding, they basically.
It was, it was directly delivered to us, and just to clarify one point, the price that we originally got, which was from, directly from the manufacturer, it wasn't a distributor, it wasn't a wholesaler, it was directly from the manufacturer. That number was around $28,000. The pump that is currently on site was $38,000, so there was a 10%, there was a $10,000 difference between the two, but that's, that's going to be the difference when you're dealing with someone who is buying it and then selling it to us, as opposed to us going directly to the.
Right, they, I mean, they never touched it. They just had it chipped directly to Jerome Harrison, and it.
It came from the factory shipped to us.
$10,000 shipping charge, basically.
And that's, that's why this council worked so hard to, you know, try to squeeze every dollar out, and for us to throw 10, 15, $20,000 and even more on these, on the ventilators.
more in these, in the ventilators, um, away, it just seems foolish.
I, I, I don't disagree with you, it's just eighty-four dash ten is impossible to, to, it's not ambiguous, it's all purchases of and contracts for, supplies and contractual services and all sales of personal property which have become obsolete and unusable shall, except as this particular year in, be based on competitive bidding. And we went to the definition set, I mean, we were efforting to find a way, any sort of hold, this cheese has, is not Swiss, you know, there, it's, it's, the ordinance is pretty, pretty solid in its, uh, in its present form and the only exceptions to get around the competitive, uh, bidding process is what, it has to be a state bid purchase, that, or it has to be a piggyback, uh, on another, uh, award of a competitive bid. Uh, and I didn't see any way around it and, and again, I think we spent the better part of thirty to forty-five minutes trying to read the ordinance.
So, but the unit ventilator issue basically has been resolved because this company did submit a bid, so that-
We, we rebid and they submitted, right.
At which will be open soon.
Right.
Only half of the twen- meeting on the twenty.
Right, but that took effort.
Right.
Right.
Right, so that, so in the, for the immediate issue, so that that project can continue moving forward, that has been resolved right now, but the bigger picture is we still need to look at it.
Right.
So, going forward.
The town doesn't wanna find itself in a moment of criticism where it's strongly recommending to a vendor that it submit a bid, you know, because that seems to defeat the competitive bidding process if the town is soliciting bids, which it's, it's entitled to do, but it seems to undermine the, the, the concept of the competitive bidding process and creates administrative, uh, uh, work that could simply be avoided if you had the ability to say, we're just buying parts, we have a vendor that we're, we've bought parts from before. Uh, you know, you could, you could establish it so that that still comes before council before it gets, uh, approved, so that there's some public oversight, but, you know, I, I do think we need a slight amendment, uh, to eighty-four dash ten to allow some more flexibility.
How's the rest of the council feel?
I think we should amend the, somehow amend the ordinance.
Can you work on that?
Yeah, I, I think it's, I, I don't think it's a difficult fix, I just think, uh, I think if we provide an exception under eighty-four dash ten for parts, uh, you know, I can work on some language and look at some other towns and bring something back.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I can. Thanks, Bill.
Next is, uh, community events and presentations. Presentation of Malone and McRide, um, regarding the plan of conservation development.
Good evening, I just wanted to introduce, um, Pat Gallagher from Malone and McBroom. So, as you all are aware, we've been working on the update to the plan of conservation and development for the town, so this is something that's done every ten years. And most recently, the, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission did review the draft plan and referred it to the town council and the council of governments. So, we're in the sixty-five day comment period, um, and so this evening, Pat Gallagher is just going to do a high-level overview of this draft plan and our copies of the plan are available here at Town Hall, at both of the libraries, and then it's also available on the town website. So, if people have comments, they can submit them in writing to me or via email.
Hi, Kerry. Hi, everybody. I'm Pat Gallagher with Malone and McBroom and we've been assisting the town over the last twelve months with the update of the plan of conservation and development, or as we call it, the P O C D. So, I'll start with just a brief overview of what the P O C D is. It's really meant to be a long-term vision for the community that has some short-term actions that the town can take to achieve that vision and it's really meant to provide policy guidance, uh, related to land use matters, uh, and the physical, economic and social development of the community. This is a statutory requirement by the state, uh, the state requires the town to have a, a adopted plan and that this plan is updated every ten years. Your current plan expires in November and so we're on track to have this updated plan for your current plan expires. One of the things the plan is used for is by the Planning and Zoning Commission as they are contemplating land use application, the plan is really their bible, they can refer back to it, uh, to see, you know, what's the community vision, what's the overall goal, goals and objectives of the town, and it can also be used, uh, by the town as it pursues discretionary grant funds from the state. So, moving on to our process, uh, state statutes require that the plan is adopted by the Planning and Zoning Commission, however, town council does, uh, have some oversight through the referral process that Kerry mentioned. We also have a steering committee comprised of Michael Paulus, Gary Duquesne, Roger Salway, the Economic Development Director, uh, Harry Dulak, the Chair of the P D C, and Dave Sargent from the North Branford Land Conservation Trust. And so, they've really been our day-to-day folks overseeing the development of the plan. Our process started with a review of a lot of data and that really allows us to see how the communities changed over the last ten years, establishes a benchmark of where the community is today, and also identifies trends that may shape the community over the coming decade. And it's a lot of information and, uh, over the last few years, we've tried to get away from writing, you know, long reports about data and trying to condense it into more user-friendly graphical format, um, so we have two kind of data fact books that we developed for this project that are on the website and will eventually be appendices to the plan. Community outreach is also a really important component, uh, making sure that, um, the community has ample opportunity to comment on not just the vision of the plan, but, um, the recommendations as well. Uh, and again, the, the steering committee was really instrumental in kind of getting the word out, uh, whether it was through passing out comic or, uh, survey cards on election day, uh, to, you know, just spreading the word, uh, through the town staff. We had a community survey in the winter of twenty eighteen that was taken by almost nine hundred respondents, so a really good turnout. So, we estimate that that covered almost fifteen percent of all of the households in North Branford. So, it really provides a good, um, pulse of how the community feels about particular issues. And then we followed that up with a special survey pertaining to the town center in, uh, March of twenty nineteen and I think it's really, uh, timing was, was great in terms of, you're all deliberating some long-term investments in the town center and that really aligned with our process where we're looking to establish some long-term goals and objectives for the town. So, we're happy we're gonna have some synergy there. We also had two workshops, uh, one in January and one in May, where again, we were trying to vet the, some of our vision, uh, for the plan as well as, uh, strategies and recommendations. Getting into the plan's structure, um, the plan is really formulated around, uh, goals, objectives and strategies that we've grouped together into, uh, similar buckets or themes. Um, and these are pretty similar to the, uh, overall themes and priorities in previous plans. We have two pertaining to the protection of your rural character, your agricultural resources and, uh, protection of natural areas. We have goals around growing the grand list and pursuing balanced growth in areas with existing infrastructure as well as providing, uh, supporting transportation investments in those areas, as well as, uh, recommendations, uh, related to quality of life, maintaining high-quality, uh, town facilities and services and providing diverse housing choices to meet your town's changing demographic needs. The draft plan itself, again, we strove to have a succinct, user-friendly plan, um, that hopefully provides, um, enough context without getting too into the weeds. And it's really focused on, um, identifying some of the issues and trends that are relevant to the goals and recommendations, as well as saying how we're gonna get there and who's responsible for leading that effort, as well as a timeframe to complete those actions. P O C D is a guidance document, it's non-binding, um, but we hope that it can provide some, some good guidance for various, uh, town boards and commissions, uh, over the next ten years. And again, making sure that the plan meets all statutory requirements. Moving on to the future land use plan, uh, the future land use plan is really a graphical depiction of specific policy priorities and recommendations. It shows certain areas of town, or it classifies different areas of town, uh, under different future land use categories and we have specific policies and recommendations pertaining to particular areas. So, for example, we have, uh, Northford Center and North Branford Center as their own future land use categories and then we have recommendations pertaining to those areas. It's different than your zoning map because it is a, really an advisory map, um, really a policy guide, uh, as opposed to a regulation. However, it can be used to inform future zoning changes by the Planning and Zoning Commission. So, getting down to our conservation and development priority areas, without getting into too many of the details, um, the conservation priority areas that this plan highlights is, uh, protecting the Farm River Valley, particularly as an agricultural area with many sensitive natural resources, uh, Lake Gallard and Regional Water Authority lands, although we also have some recommendations to hopefully make those lands a little more usable to members of the community. And then, uh, another conservation priority is, uh, the development of greenways along the Farm River and at the Trolley Line. The plan also has development priority areas and again, focused in areas that are served by water and sewer infrastructure, particularly the Route Eighty corridor, uh, North Branford Center and Northford Center. The final component to the plan is the action agenda and this provides specific, uh, actions and recommendations, as well as lead and support entities, uh, usually town boards and commissions or staff, and a timeframe for completion. Paralleling the P O C D is the development of a strategic plan, um, and this is a different document than the P O C D, but it's great that these two processes are happening in tandem with one another because they do have a lot of overlap. The strategic plan, um, is really going to be a tool that will allow the town to assess different capital projects and how well they align with community goals, as well as, uh, financial, uh, and other regulatory considerations. Uh, we're really just kicking this process off now with the steering committee and we hope to work with them and with you to really hone in on what are some of the metrics and variables that we use to assess these projects going forward as part of the strategic plan. The P O C D really does a good job of, um, identifying some community priorities that we hope we can also roll into that as well. And so, again, we look forward to working with you over the next few months to develop that plan. In terms of, uh, next steps, uh, right now, we are in our sixty-five day public comment period and that public comment period will last until the public hearing on adoption, which is slated for early October. So, during that time, members of the public, yourselves, town staff can review and comment on the plan and once the public comment period is over, P D C can choose to incorporate those edits into the final document. And, uh, comments can be submitted through Kerry, uh, and she will forward them on to us and, uh, yeah, we look forward to hearing from you. Thanks.
Thank you. Next item, citizen statements, petitions and correspondence.
Look, Potter, Middle Town Avenue, um, this school has been a monkey on everybody's back. Part of the problem falls on the committee that you had that permitted project building committee. I've sat back here, I've seen the letter from the contractor that specifically said, do not break the bricks. If you make me break the bricks, I'm not responsible for the problems that happen. He blatantly knew what you're now seeing would happen. And when somebody goes ahead and ignores that kind of letter, shame on them. It can't come out of their pockets and I hate to say it, but you're probably gonna have to do the whole building to save it. When that happens, you don't have any checks and balances, I don't know, it got through that committee somehow. And unfortunately, you guys become the police after the fact. You see the mess and then you're left with a way to try to fix it if you can. I say, and, and again, if you don't bite the bullet and do the whole building, ten years from now, you're gonna be trying to put wood sides out of, I don't know what you're gonna do to it. Rebuild as new is the worst thing you could ever done. Any building that you rebuild is new, you rebuild as new over and over and over again every other year. You're stuck with a nemesis now. You've had the air conditioning be a big factor. You've put so much money into that building, you could've built a new N B I S and a new high school almost for what you spent on that building. But let me get back to who's at fault. Your own people you appoint to these committees. Why do they ignore that letter? That letter exists, I don't know if it's in the file somewhere, Mike, but it exists, it was shown here one night. And, and then whoever did or did not read that letter said, let's go ahead and make it look pretty. Well, it looking pretty expensive, that's only pretty you're gonna see now. I don't know what the fix is and now you just had this pump issue, you're really trying to play catch-up too many times. You need some real strict guidelines, the way these, uh, commissions did, are allowed to sign off on such big projects and, and then you're stuck with a mess. I mean, I, I appreciate the fact that they're giving their time. When you're Lou Zal, you're gonna lose a lot of building expertise because, don't forget, Al's doing it every day and he's learned that lessons the hard way as well. I don't know what the answer is, but I sure as heck am very disappointed that that went ahead and got approved when the actual person said, don't do it, don't do it, this is New England, gotta get that water off the face of that building as fast as you can. And by raking it, it goes in and out and in and out and like you say, it's gonna pop bricks and rot 'em out and everything else and, and now you, you're stuck with something. So, I think you really need to sit down, when you, whenever the so- county, town council settles down to what it's gonna be after the election, and look at these committees and look at the responsibility you give them and, and somehow reel it in. But again, it shouldn't be your workload to, to have to check everybody's work. You supposedly put competent people that can make decisions in there and then we're stuck with a mess after they made this decision. This is just one of many. We had a history of going for the lowest bid and boy, do we get the lowest bid work many times over. So, do I say we wanna spend this much money? No. But look at what's gonna happen if we don't, because go back to that letter, some old Italian that did brickwork for a living told you, don't do it and it got done. So, shame on that committee and now it's on your shoulders to try to suck it up and fix it up. I don't know where you're gonna go with it, but we got another mess on our hands. Thank you.
Resignations and appointments, have nothing listed, unfinished business, discussion in action, future budget planning initiative?
I don't have any items.
Update at nine forty-four Totoka Road, remediation?
Just a brief update, um, as reported last meeting, that item has been approved by the Inland Weapons Commission. Right now, we're just pushing for a schedule to get it completed. Uh, there's basically two months left in this year and I'm trying to get that material removed and we're trying to push the, uh, the owner applicant to, to get that done to get us a schedule. Thank you.
Investigation into Park and Recreation Commission.
Yeah, so you, you all have the report, uh, last meeting and, um, you know, I think it's important that, you know, we try to get, uh, closure on that and wrap that up and, and I think it's important to have us, you know, uh, some of this on, on, on the record. So, i- if the council wouldn't mind, I, I think the, you know, the conclusion recommendation I can read, uh, that I think will help, you know, give a public statement and, and give closure to it.
Okay. Can you read that?
I mean, it was nine, nine pages and so I'll just cut to the chase and, and, and read the conclusions and recommendations that, together with the, the town attorney we put together. Uh, so, the, the, here are the findings, uh, in our opinion, there is insufficient evidence to reasonably conclude that any member of the commission engaged in inappropriate conduct during the meetings or outside of the meeting process. The factual record supports the conclusion that the events that occurred at the commission meeting were the culmination of months of building frustration and tension caused by a breakdown in communication. The three new members felt that the department director and chairman were ignoring issues that they had raised, while the department director and chairman believed that their three new members were engaging in inappropriate micromanagement of the department. Overall, there is no one event or moment that led to the events of May twenty-eighth, two thousand and nineteen. All parties engaged in what he or she believed to be the best interests of the department and of the town, but lack the ability to adequately and completely articulate his or her position because of a difference of understanding of the members' roles and responsibilities. Uh, so we go on to, to make recommendations and, and making four recommendations to the council, which I hope, uh, you'll accept and approve, that all members in, review chapter eighty-eight of the town code, uh, all members of the park and recommission, the clerk of the communication, I mean, of the commission, the director, department director, town council liaison, participate in training sessions with the town attorney and the town manager. Uh, that all questions to the department director for any communications, uh, for any commu- I'm sorry, for any commission member be acknowledged within four days and answered within a reasonable time period, as is consistent with and required by the Freedom of Information Act. Four, uh, if the department head fails to respond to any questions raised by the commission member within two week, with a two-week period, such failure should be made known to the town manager and to the co- town council liaison. The town manager should address the issue directly with the department head and the town council liaison, should include the report, the reported failure in the monthly report to the town council. So, those are, those are the recommendations of the findings and the conclusion and I'm hoping that, you know, the council will, will act upon that tonight.
Mr. Mayor, if, uh, if the council seems, uh, feels as appropriate, I think the appropriate, uh, action to- to conclude this matter is for the council to adopt a motion to accept the report as stated, and to direct the town manager and the town attorney to implement the recommendations.
So moves, somebody?
Second.
Okay. Joe made the motion. Murray seconded it. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Doody?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Miller?
Yes.
Councilor Zampano?
Yes.
I would just like to say that I think the idea of a workshop is a good one, and maybe right after the election, there could be a workshop for all new council members, or in other words, all commissions and town council. I think that would be, I think a lot of people, and Tom has talked about that in the past, too.
It's not uncommon in most of the communities that we represent, we recommend following an election, that whether it be a refresher for re-elected incumbents or newly elected officials, that we have a seminar to inform people about their roles, their responsibilities, the Freedom of Information Act, how to conduct a meeting, things of that nature, so we have proper decorum.
Thank you. Next is review of schedule for R F P number nine, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen feasibility study for North Branford High School.
This was talked about earlier under the committee report, but, so the subcommittee that was formed will include three town council members, Marie Diamond, Tom Zampano, and myself, and three board of ed members, Shawna Papa Holzer, Marcy Anolfrio, and Jana Bosamo, in addition to the superintendent of schools, and the town manager. When they can, the town manager is, kind of when he can make the meetings, he may not be able to make all of the meetings, and that's fine. We're basically a subcommittee that will be reviewing the proposals, interviewing them, and then making a recommendation to the town council to award the bid. So like I said, the next meeting is July thirty-first, and then we hope to schedule the interviews, which we hope to get done in one night. There's four companies within a few weeks after that, so hopefully, at one of our September meetings, we will have a recommendation to move forward on this.
Need a motion?
What, to?
Appoint the members?
Do we, do we have to have a motion to appoint the members, or we just, we did it at our subcommittee meeting, we made a subcommittee?
Right, but the members, the subcommittee would, the council is the appointing authority, right? So the subcommittee can make a recommendation to the council of who the members are, but then this would be the appointing authority.
The appointing authority of the subcommittee?
Yeah, to appoint the subcommittee.
If I, if I heard it correctly, that it's...
All right, so let's just, I'll move to appoint the people that rose listed as members of the subcommittee.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Did you get those, Michelle?
No.
Okay, so, all right, so from the town council, it is Marie Diamond, Tom Zampano, and myself. And from the Board of Education, it is Shawna Papa Holzer, Marcy Anolfrio, and Jana Bosamo.
And?
John, I think it's J A N A, is that?
Jana.
That's correct.
And?
Jana, J A N A, Bosamo?
It's B A.
B A L S A N O.
M, I think.
M.
S A M O, B A L S A M O.
Okay, thank you.
Roll call.
Mayor Doody?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Miller?
Yes.
Councilor Zampano?
Yes.
Next is review and approval of contract with Simple Recycling.
Yes, this is the program we talked about that would supply the pink bags that we talked about for collecting clothing and other household items to help divert from the solid waste municipal stream. It went to the has waste, solid has waste committee for review, which they endorse and recommend with a recommendation for starting date of October first, in order to give the town and community and the organization time to market and coordinate and campaign. And in the meantime, the town attorney has reviewed the contract that would be under for this organization to begin the process in October. And the town attorney was also kind enough to share how they do it in a package that was mailed to each resident in Orange. This pink bag is what they use, which goes out on the same day as your regular garbage pickup. The organization follows the route that we have, and they go, use their own vehicles to pick these bags of clothing and other items up on a weekly basis.
So once you use the bag, do they leave you a new one?
Just, if I may, just so I'm not skirting my recycling responsibilities, that was mailed to my house in Orange, because the town of Orange also is doing a similar program, an identical program, and I reviewed the contract there, which is identical in form to the one that North Branford is entering into, so I hope to get that back eventually, so I can put my old and worn-out wares. The way it's supposed to work, I'm told, is you put it out on the day that you put out your recyclables. They follow the recycling truck and pickup, and then in, they leave in, tied to your recycling bin, a replacement bag.
Okay.
So I asked previously about the disposition of the goods, and I was hoping you might have some further information to illuminate that, because on other, on other pieces of information, we hear about soft goods being flooding markets in Africa and elsewhere far greater than they can absorb. So I'm wondering if this is in any way part of that. And of course, they're selling it, they're making a profit, so I'm wondering how that works.
Yeah, I was, I was told that they, they sort based on the condition of the clothing, and so that anything that receives a good condition is sold to thrift stores. Anything in fair condition is sent over overseas, and then anything categorized as bad condition is recycled material. What I don't have are the percentages with respect to how much or volume, but that's their, their process of the firm that Waste Zero that works with Simple Recycling to take care of the waste that's generated.
Yeah, that's the same information that you gave previously when we heard about this. But it says under, under their number thirteen for marketing and disposition, they are solely in charge of how they dispose of their material, and I was previously asking for, and continue to ask for a little bit more information.
Sorry, I'm a representative...
Oh, I didn't see you there, Savannah, I'm sorry.
And I think I can answer your question.
Just identify yourself, please, for the record.
Sure. Savannah Harique, I'm a representative with Waste Zero and Simple Recycling, the company that provides this service. So it is exactly as the town manager said, it's, the good stuff gets sold to thrift stores, some of it goes overseas, but really, the bulk of the material gets shredded and used in the rag industry and used as insulation. So they're taking things that you wouldn't necessarily donate to a charity or something like that. Maybe it's stained or totally ripped, or it's one shoe, that's not suitable for resale in the U.S. or overseas.
What do they do if there's something in the bag that's totally inappropriate and shouldn't have been placed in there in the first place?
Sure, so that's only about two percent of what they get, so ninety-eight percent of what they're getting is reusable or recyclable. But either way, they'll still take it, they don't search bags up the curb or anything like that. So as soon as it's in the pink bag, it's their responsibility. But generally, because it's a voluntary program, people don't have to participate, they're generally reading the instructions and making sure that they're putting in the correct items.
I thought I saw something in here about they do inspect, and they leave the bag with a skip tag.
Yeah, there was something called a skip tag.
It's only happened in rare cases of, there's been a couple cases where they saw paint cans or clearly hazardous waste in the bags, and then they will call Public Works or the city or town and just see what they want them to do with that.
Very Franny.
You don't get away from anything, do you?
It's not a skip tag, it's a Fran tag.
Skip, go directly to Fran.
Any other questions?
Thank you for that.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you for your time.
Just one comment, why are we going five years? Is that mandatory? Do we really despise the service? We're stuck with it for five years?
I don't, well, I, no, I think we could, we could, I think we have the ability to modify that, and I think it was just a standard that came with the...
It wasn't discussed, as far as I know, so...
Shouldn't we give that some thought? I mean, lock ourselves into something totally unknown for five years?
Or, or have it out, if you want to put it for five, but...
I would like the right to terminate after a year.
Terminate after a year.
I could go with a short term, five years. There are a lot of marriages that don't go that long.
I, I, we can, we can go back to the company to see if that's a modifiable term on their part and report back. I don't know if necessarily time is of the essence on it.
No, no, it's, again, any of the dates, you know, October first was just a number two, if it were approved tonight, we could get, and we can set that as October fifteenth or end of October, November one. Doesn't, there's no reason we can't bring it back and look at modifying this.
Would, just for purposes of dialogue, would a, the right to terminate after a year for...
Well, it says here that either party may terminate for convenience upon a hundred and eighty calendar day written notice.
All right, that works.
And the only part of that is that if we do that, if, should North Branford elect to terminate for convenience, we have to agree not to enter into any other soft recyclable curbside collection program for the remainder of the initial three years.
My only, my only hesitation and pause for the moment is I want to take a second look at that, because the word convenience is somewhat of a, right now, as I hear you say it, what does that mean?
Okay.
What does convenience?
So it's item twenty-two in the contract.
Yes. That, it should be, rather than at convenience, either party has the right to terminate.
Okay.
And is the hundred and eighty days acceptable notice? Because that's...
Six months.
Yeah, that seems reasonable.
Okay. So I just want to get the word convenience clarified, so there's no ambiguity, as we've discovered in other contracts.
That's fine.
Somebody want to make a motion with that stipulation?
Well, do we want to just...
I thought we were tabling it till here.
Why don't we let Finn go through it again and come back to us?
We'll bring it back next week.
Okay. Moving into new business, discussion in action, B O E request for auditorium capital expenditure?
Periodically, the Board of Education uses the surplus proceeds from rental of the auditorium to purchase capital items. In the past, the carpetings, the curtains behind the stage, and a request was received from superintendent's office to replace lighting and the sound system that the staff wears to communicate back and forth, had a cost of roughly thirteen thousand eight hundred dollars. Again, we've done this several times throughout the years. There is money. In the past year, we did budget twenty-five, received close to forty, so the thirteen eight is well within the amount that we received above and beyond our budget, so I'd recommend that we allocate the money.
Okay, so since this came out, there's been a little revision to this. I talked to the superintendent. So there actually is, in addition to the lighting and the communication items, the floor on the stage needs to be either repaired or replaced. There's a flooring over the top of the hardwood floor, and it's painted, and I don't know, Bill, maybe you can explain to us, so glad you're here tonight, so that you can, is it a subflooring, or is it, what exactly is that flooring?
It's, I guess for sake of a better term, it's called a beaver board. It's got the hard surface on it, and that's screwed down with multitudes of screws onto the hardwood floor that's currently under this surface. What happens is, when the dance companies come in, they put tape, duct tape, painter's tape, every kind of tape on the, on the floor to line up the kids, and then when they yank it off, over time, it takes the top, the covering of this board, and it tears that hard surface off, and then underneath it is that, it's almost like a sawdust product underneath it. So there's several areas where there's spots that are divested out, and the whole floor needs to be replaced.
Okay, so, do you have any idea of an estimate of...
No, no, but we have put some specifications together for it.
Okay, so I talked to the superintendent tonight before the meeting, when he was here for the other meeting. So we would like to increase this amount that we're going to allocate for capital, and we're going to increase it so we can also get some extra of the canned, the lighting fixtures, because the thirty that are in here are, those are already all shot, and they don't have any extra. So if any other ones go out between now and, within the next couple months, they don't have any, they would have to buy them. So we want to be able to have some extra on hand for them, because this is another instance where they're, we're just buying the parts, and they're going to install them as they need them along the way. So I would like to make a motion, being hereby resolved that the North Branford Town Council directs the Treasurer-Financer Director to transfer twenty-eight thousand dollars of the net auditorium rentals received in the two thousand eighteen-nineteen fiscal year to the nineteen-twenty Capital Improvement Plan Fund four sixty-eight, and the transfer will be recorded as of June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen. Second. So this allows about ten thousand dollars or so for the floor, to fix the flooring. And since it's in capital and it goes out to bid, if it comes in less than that, then the money will just go back into the general fund on there. But the superintendent thought that that was a fair number to use to fix the floor also in the auditorium.
Any more discussion?
Yes, I have a question for Mr. Schody. Since we're adding ten thousand dollars for your floor, what is the school going to do about the tape issue for the future?
We keep telling the dance companies as they come in, they can't use duct tape anymore, they can only use painter's tape on it. We have been seasonally painting the floor to try and keep it going, so to speak, and that's been, that was working out okay, but now we're twenty years into the project, into the building right now, and it's just, it's just worn out. But they do put in the contract that these people sign, that they cannot use duct tape on the floors.
Should we bill the factoring in a cost for the tape and providing the tape we want used, and say, "Thou shalt not bring any tape in here, use our tape"?
No one's ever suggested that. It sounds like a pretty reasonable idea. I would have to talk to the theater director about that to see what, what recommendation he would have, or what he's actually, they have a tape, they call it theater tape.
It would seem to give you the control you need.
Yeah, they have a tape, they call it theater tape, and that's what it's for. Some of the dance companies that come in, what they... Some of the dance companies that come in, what they do is they put their own floor down over the top of our floor and they tape that down. So it's, there's a lot of tape in it goes on.
Is this, so is this the original bead board that was put down on the auditorium? So it has never been replaced? Okay.
So they're putting down their own floor with floor tape?
They, they put, it's, it's a large area, it might be thirty, thirty by sixty feet. They put that down and they tape the edges.
And that damages our floor?
The area that, that they're covering up and where their tape is going, it doesn't seem to do anything to our floor. But that's just very, the large dance companies that come in, the, the three-day events, they're, they're, they usually do that. The locals don't do that. The, the ones that are there for like just one day, they don't do that. They just put the.
The ones that are there for a recital versus competition.
Yeah, competitions, right.
So you said there's guidelines or, or a contract that says.
They're in, they're in the contract as to what kind of tape they're supposed to use.
So when someone comes in and uses duct tape, what happens?
Uh, they take the paint right off the floor.
Yeah, it's not my, that's not the answer.
At their claw.
Again, unless the theater director reports that they have damaged the floor, they're supposed to be charged back for it.
Right, okay.
And I, you know, I'm kind of out of that loop. I don't know really exactly what those people are doing for setup. That's a theater director's thing.
Right, so it needs, it needs to be accountability and follow-up, right?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
So what's the mechanism for inspection after use when you lease it?
Uh, we look for, we look for the seats, we look for the carpeting. We look for any damage done with like pocket knives into the woodwork.
So now you look at the floor?
Yeah, that, that kind of stuff. We look for the damage in the classrooms because they use the classrooms as dressing rooms. We go into there and we check our, our smart boards to make sure there's no writing on those. The, the window screens, we check all those after they leave. We do a pretty concise checkup of what everything is doing. But right now, the floor is so damaged that even if somebody put a piece of tape on it, you probably wouldn't know it was theirs.
So, so let me ask you though, when you do your inspection, is, is there a formal document you have?
Uh, no, it's usually just a report from the, from the theater director. And that goes to central office.
As a formal docket, document, it could be part of the package when you, when it's complete. Yes, everything's passed and we're good to go.
Not, not having the contract in front of me, I can, I can provide you with the contract that they sign. I, I think you'd be surprised to see what we ask of people.
No, I, I understand that, but now, after the event.
He's just saying an inspection checklist.
Right, inspection, that we've checked all this, we're good to go, this, 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 this client or this customer is.
There's no chargeback.
Right, we're happy with them.
What's reported to us.
Right.
Just communications with the theater director to maybe start a checklist and supply the tape.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, it would, it would complete the process maybe.
Maybe we could get that back to your people.
Will, sir.
Thank you.
Aren't you glad you came tonight, though?
He's been up here a lot.
Okay, next is appointment of Sean Kieloff as interim recreation director. Oh. Sorry. Any further discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Dudi.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnen.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
Next is appointment of Sean Kieloff as interim recreation director.
Yeah, so I put together a memo suggesting recommending that we elevate Sean from acting to interim. I am underway with interview process for the director. I just don't know if we'll be successful. And I'm not sure how long that process is going to take. And I think Sean, after two and a half years, has a good feel for grasp of what's going on there. And the department certainly handle the duties and responsibilities. And I'd like to designate him as interim.
And what do you do as far as salary? Is it some range between, obviously he was paid less than the director, but.
Right, I typically, i- in past practice, bump them up to the, to the director's salary while they're in that position, for that short-term interim position.
What is the need to change from acting director to interim director? What does that do for us? Why do we need to vote on this?
Well, I just want to keep you informed and I think that, you know, he's got to run the department and I'd like to have him have full authorization in terms of signing purchase orders, signing everything, he needs to sign contracts, whatever may come up. And it's, you know, my, my recommendation in terms of, of director, department head level, that it needs the approval of the, of the council. And I think we've done that in the past where we've had, in fact, I think we did, the last time we did it around was, was Lauren as the interim back in two thousand fifteen until she moved up to acting director. I mean, to permanent director.
Okay, we have a suggested motion?
In accordance with section C six dash three of the Charter of the Town of North Branford, the Town Council hereby confirms the town manager's, manager's appointment of Sean Kieloff to serve as interim director to the Recreation Department.
Second.
Can you just clarify as of date and the salary?
Well, I don't know what the salary is for, or what the salary was.
Effective immediately and what's the salary, Mike?
Well, do you want it as of July fifteenth? Because that's, Lauren retired on, the twelfth was her last day, so the fifteenth would have been Sean's first day.
Right.
As of July fifteenth at the.
Present.
Present, same salary as the retired rec. department director.
Uh, second.
Okay, discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Dudi.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnen.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
And next is review and approve of bid specifications for bid number thirteen, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, masonry repair at North Branford Auditorium.
It's, so these bid specs have the, you know.
Yeah, ca- came from the architect that the school used, came before us and, and all done by the, by the architect based, I believe, on the, on the outline that Bill had from Capasos. Is that correct?
Uh, yes.
So, so I take it the Board of Ed is okay with these specs or?
We have, we looked at quantities rather than just an allocation for, for repairs on brickwork and joint work. So we were, we were very comfortable with what we had read in the spec.
Okay.
So is this general maintenance? Well, i- is this?
To clarify, general maintenance, that would be something that you would do routinely. This is definitely not a routine repair to the building. Uh, this is a, this is a time, uh, time-sensitive type of deal where over twenty years, the building's been sitting out in the, in the weather and it's, it's time for some, for some work with, like I say, the expansion joints have dried up and some of them have fallen out and it needs some repointing of some brickwork and the ceiling of the front of the, of the entire building.
So it's not a design or, or, or.
No.
Or installation?
No.
Issue? That, that's kind of what I'm, why I'm asking.
We're not, we're not, we're not seeing that as an issue.
It's a twenty, twenty-year facelift.
Okay.
It's a twenty-year facelift.
That, that's why I'm asking if it had something to do with that.
So this, so sealing the brick was never done on the building?
Correct.
Okay. And, and so this is sealing the brick in addition to fixing joints or whatever need to be fixed prior to sealing?
Correct, right. Washing it.
Should it have been sealed?
Coatings, coatings, the only good thing I could say is coatings have come a long way and ceilings and everything else now than they were twenty years ago. Twenty years ago, they probably didn't have a sealed coating for brick like they do now.
I know for a fact about seven years ago, we had discussed sealing the brick. But at that time, we were just looking at the east face of the building, which is the front.
The same side of the building that NBI says is.
Part of, part of why I'm asking though too is sometimes when you do a job, a, a big job like that and it's in the contract to be done, but if no one's paying attention, sometimes things don't get done. That, that's why I'm asking.
I, I found nothing in the original specifications and of the building work itself where it had any more proving other brick.
I'd like to make a motion to approve bid spec number thirteen, two thousand nineteen twenty, masonry repairs to North Branford Auditorium.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Dudi.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnen.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
And Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
Next is review and approve of bid specifications, bid number twelve, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, cleaning and sealing of Bituminous concrete pavement.
Briefly, it's, it's the annual crack sealing bid, crack sealing of Bituminous roads. It, it's a hot asphalt that gets sealed into the roads. It, it really extends the life of the roads, keeps water out. It's an important part of our pavement preservation program. The actual number, we put in a budgetary number of pounds. Depends on the actual price per pound it comes in or with contractor. To adjust that based upon their bid on a per-pound basis. We've listed the, basically, in an area of towns and try to keep it in the, you try to work through the town in the specified area, we're up in the Northford area, some of the roads were paved about eight or nine years ago. Try to crack seal and keep on top of them. It also provides for possible extension of contract for the next couple of years. So you don't have to haterily go out to bid.
Do you have like an overview, like a schedule overview that you know like what the next set of roads are and the next set you have? How do you determine that?
For the overall roads, we have a pavement inventory, pavement condition of the age of the roads, the type of pavement and when it was last surfaced. And, and the condition rating, and that's what we use for our milling and paving or reconstruction program. That along with the budget. We'd like to do a lot more, but you have to work within the budget. The crack sealing, generally what we try to do is work, sort of work through the town in the area. What we don't want to have the contractor do is just jump from this road and just end it down and this, and the other end of town. Try to circle them through the town. It's efficiency, it gives us a better price for the work. As long as we maintain it, then, then we generally cover the roads within five to six years. We, we can get a crack seal. And it, and that's been working pretty good.
Want to make the motion?
Make the motion to approve the bid specification of bid number twelve, two thousand nineteen twenty, cleaning and sealing in Bituminous concrete pavement.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Dudi.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnen.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
Next is award of RFP number ten, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, consultation services to prepare nomination to Connecticut State Registry of Historic Places for the Auger House.
I don't know if you, if you have any questions, I'm happy to, to answer them. But we did receive two proposals. Only one of them was a qualified response because they were required through the grant process to have certain qualifications. So in my memo, I had recommended to the purchasing agent in town manager, the person, David Taylor, be awarded the bid.
I'd like to make a motion to award RFP number ten, two thousand eighteen nineteen, consultant services to prepare nominations to the state, Connecticut State Registry of Historic Places for the Auger House to David Taylor at a price of five thousand dollars.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Dudi.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnen.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
Next is award of RFP number four, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, painting Auger House two ninety-eight, two ninety-eight Forest Road, Northford.
Yeah, the items for F and G are not ready and recommend we.
Just reading them off so we could table them.
Yeah, okay.
Anyone want to make a motion on the table?
I make a motion to table item nine F and nine G to our next meeting so they can have time to vet all of the responses.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Dudi.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnen.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
Okay, next is award of bid number eight, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, roof repair to the former senior center, sixteen seventy-five Foxen Road, North Branford.
Yeah, on this one, the, the recommendation.
Is this the handout?
Yeah, the handout. There was a, there was a mistake in, when, when. Michelle Knackwood went to confirm with Bay Restoration as a low bidder. They were not the right number and, and clarified. And that's why you have the, the supplement there with the handwriting that they confirmed that their, their bid was thirty-five thousand seven fifty, no longer making them the lowest bid. And therefore, it goes to the second bidder shoreline, and that's the recommendation before you is for shoreline, for twenty-four, three, three sixty.
I'd like to make a motion to award bid number eight, two thousand nineteen twenty. What are we on? Roof repair? Oh.
No, we're on, yeah, roof repair, senior center.
Roof repair to the former senior center at sixteen seventy-five Foxen Road to shoreline restoration of East Haven for a base bid price of twenty-four thousand three hundred and sixty dollars.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Dudi.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnen.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
Okay, next is bid number ten, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, roof repair Auger House, two ninety-eight Forest Road, Northford.
I'd like to make a motion to award bid number ten, two thousand nineteen twenty, roof repair to the Auger House at two ninety-eight Forest Road. I'd like to make a motion to award bid number ten, two thousand nineteen, twenty, roof repair to the Auger House at two ninety-eight Forest Road to Shoreline Restoration of East Haven for seven thousand four hundred and thirty-six dollars.
Second. Discussion?
Are we sure these, these numbers are accurate? Is one doing a minor repair and the other is doing a full roof?
So it's a full roof.
So they're gonna do a full roof for seventy-four hundred dollars?
Yeah.
Yeah, look at the other prices.
That's about the, that, if you look at his, uh, amount of squares, that's right in the, in the range. I don't know where the other guys are coming from with the price, but... You mind, that's on the Auger House?
Yes.
How many squares the Auger House?
About eighteen squares, it's about four hundred dollars a square.
Is, is one a ripoff or?
They're both ripoffs.
So, so they're gonna rip that off?
Yep. Four hundred bucks a square and rip one off with none.
Okay. Just, it's just, there's such a difference.
I know.
I just think that you figured it out. I, I'm saying it's around eighteen square, but, you know, that's a small house. That's, that's not a big town.
No.
I don't know, we're at twenty thousand dollars.
No, but I mean, yeah, but you look at the, there's three of them that are pretty close, and then, then you have two on either side, you know, ones...
I, I agree exactly what you're saying, but...
Just don't.
The highest bid is five times as much.
It's four hundred dollars a square, so I don't know. I, I, I don't, I don't know. You know, maybe there's some more plywood that's gotta be replaced. I don't know. It just doesn't, and there's a, there's a clause for plywood in there, so...
Right. Okay.
I said the same thing in person. I, I did the math. Uh, I don't know what they're looking at.
Uh, but it almost looks like somebody else sees something that nobody else is seeing. You know, you know what I mean? It just, it's, it's...
You saying that, you could do a whole, you could do a thirty something hundred square foot house for twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I don't think it's a, I don't think it's a thousand square feet. I didn't measure it, you know, but I know it's, it's gotta be around, it's around eighteen feet square.
Okay.
So times four hundred.
And is the former senior center that much larger than the Auger House?
That's fifty square.
Okay.
That's a much bigger roof than a steel roof, too. But, plus the thing is a walk of a roof, the, the, the other one's not a walk of a roof.
No.
The, the senior, former senior.
Senior center.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's a, that's a bigger job, but then that still fits into the number that we're thinking.
Okay.
At, at four hundred dollars a square.
All right. Okay.
Roll call?
Mayor Duty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
All right, next is contingency appropriation fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty.
This is the item that the town manager alluded to earlier, town's contribution towards that, uh, C-three consortium of the five Shoreline towns.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the town manager to, is authorized to appropriate from reserve for contingency and transfer to the appropriate account as soon as possible for the following reason, the C-three Shoreline appropriation of three thousand dollars.
Second. Discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Duty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
Next is appropriation transfers, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen.
This is the, uh, first way as we try to reconcile the year-end balances, uh, some of the departments are, are, didn't have for transfers in town. This meeting, they'll come into the August meeting. If there's any questions, anything specific, I try to adjust them for you.
Yeah, I do on, I guess, the second page of it. I noticed in both police communication and library, there's a large taking out of pension and social security. Why would there be such a lot? Cause I know in police already, we've taken a lot out of there.
Right.
Why would there be such a discrepancy or an overage, I guess, in the budget?
I think the issue on the police department is the, as we transition our employees from the defined benefit plan where the contribution is fifty percent roughly of salary to the defined contribution plan where they're at ten percent of salary, that the budget is predicated on the higher number, so that's why there's, there's a, um, cushion, if you will, additional money there. We have corrected that in this year's budget that we have identified specific officers that are at the ten percent level versus one blanket number across the board.
Ah.
That's also a reason why you see in the extra duty fund that there's funds accumulating there. Again, because we, when we bill out to UI and the like, we have one overhead rate that we charge is predicated on the defined benefit employees. And if we have people who are defined contribution employees doing the work, we're actually billing out in excess of what we should be billing out. We almost need to have two tiers, but it hasn't gotten to the point yet where greater than fifty percent of the folks are the new pension. The lion's share are still the older pension that we need the fifty percent plus or minus contribution rate. So it, and when it gets to the point where the pendulum sways and more folks are at the ten percent level, we'll have to revamp our, our procedures and, and, and bill out at the lower number. It's either we overbill the, the UI and the like and the town gets the additional money, or we bill out at the lower rate, and if a, a defined benefit person does the job, we're, we're losing money in that case. We don't wanna lose money. So that's why you see money in the, in that pension social security line. And on, on, on the, uh, library aspect of it, uh, that budget was predicated on Bob Hall, same situation. He was in the old pension where the contribution town percentage was, say, fifty, sixty percent. Lauren now is a defined contribution plan where it's ten percent, or nine percent actually in her case. So again, at that point, the budget, she had already come into the budget being adopted at Bob's number. He was old pension. She's in the defined contribution pension plan, so that's why there's some surplus on her line there.
Okay, and so then on the third page, it goes the other way where we had to, in the engineering...
Yeah, that was, that was a budget error.
Yeah.
There was, there was an incorrect budget.
Cause no one moved there.
Yeah, no, that, that was, that was simply the wrong number was used in the budget.
Okay. So with the new ad- adoption that we have as far as line item transfers, will we still...
You won't see these.
We won't be getting as many?
Year-end. Correct. You get them, you get them throughout the year as the departments forecast their over expenditure.
Okay.
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion that the North Branford Town Council hereby approves the following appropriation transfers as recommended by the town manager and the treasurer finance director.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Duty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
The next item is approval of tax refunds.
Some more.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mayor Duty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
Next move into...
Yeah, item M.
Yeah, M, capital, um... Capital purchase for Public Works Department?
So we've been given the, uh, material for, uh, Public Works looking for a, uh, CAT two eighty-nine D three compact track loader. All the specifications, uh, uh, are provided, and, uh, the quote on, uh, contracting prices is considerably below that which is found in the state contracting, uh, pricing, if I understand that correctly. Is that right?
I'm sorry?
This is considerably below the state contracting.
Well, this is the state.
This is the state. It, it says off, oh, off list.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's, uh, considerably off, uh, which makes it a, uh, a very good, uh, a very good price at sixty-eight thousand six hundred and sixteen dollars. So I make a motion that we approve the, uh, request from, uh, Public Works to purchase this contract, uh, compact track loader.
Second.
As, uh, as quoted.
So can you just explain where the funding's coming from this, for this?
Yeah, this is, um, through the purchase that we've already done this year where, because of U Sourcewell, and this is a state bid that we are saving money on the allocations that we made for Public Works this year on the other purchase.
So it's part of, so it's part of the money that was in your capital budget?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. So this is just, these, so the purchase are, I mean, I got only, uh, the chipper left, but this is an opportunity there. We're still gonna have a pretty nice savings of money at the end of this.
Okay.
To carry forward for next year.
All right.
Just, and we did get our back truck in, uh, this week actually.
The back truck?
The back truck came in, uh, Friday, last week, it'd be, uh, it was either Friday or Monday. I don't remember. So it is in and we're starting to train down it, uh, started today.
So this is the truck that had we, it takes normally a year to...
Yeah.
Get, but what did we, there was one in stock? Is that?
Well, I, I, we had bought a, um, a stock unit that the company ordered. It came in a month prior to us getting it.
Ah.
So it's brand new, it's everything that we wanted on it, and instead of ordering another cabin chassis and then having the equipment put on it, which would have taken us another, a whole year. So it kinda, cause ours is down now completely, so it actually worked out pretty well.
Right.
So we'll be selling that, uh, at auction, the old one, so...
All right.
Fran, how, how do we know the, the, this is the best pricing?
This is the state bid, so, you, you know, you, I can either went to Sourcewell or a state bid on it, and probably the, uh, the percentage of, um, I don't know, it's on the back page, it was like thirty-seven point something percent off of list.
Oh, thirty-one point nine four.
That's pretty hard to beat. The difference between Sourcewell and the state bid, the state bid is specific to a brand, Sourcewell. You can, you can build it yourself. I mean, you can still do that on state bid also, but there's more players in it. That's why some of the stuff I gave, they give them free quotes on it, because certain ones, certain companies have different, uh, discounts on it.
Okay.
This is specifically just a state bid. So if you were, if, uh, if you, even if you're getting price on it, as a, a regular person, you didn't, you didn't touch the price on it.
Okay.
Roll call?
Mayor Duty.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
Next is, uh, citizen statements and petitions?
Bill Samistano, Sunnyside Drive. Over the weekend, uh, we had cooling stations listed in the, all around the papers, whatever. And I think it must have been an oversight, but as of like Saturday afternoon at noon time to Sunday morning at, uh, five-thirty or six o'clock, there's no, nothing open in town between the four buildings. Maybe it's an oversight, but, uh, I'm, I was surprised that nobody picked up on it. I don't know if Mike, you got any calls on it or anybody question that?
No, no, we're just, we're mirroring what our hours are. We didn't have any extended hours for cooling centers.
Well, if you're gonna, why wouldn't you if you're concerned? Why wouldn't you have it available all weekend?
Well, then we have to, I don't have that budgeted to do that.
Cause you need, you'd need personnel to...
I need personnel to staff, right, and, and we've typically just followed, uh, you know, staffing hours and opened and made that known. We, we've done sort of standard procedure for a number of years to have cooling and warming center, or in case of power outages, we do the same thing.
Yeah, in the, in the winter, same situation.
Right.
I think you really ought to look at it, and I mean, why, if, if I, the average person looked at that and say, well, I got covered. I can go to, I can go to, if they didn't scrutinize the hours, they would expect to be able to come somewhere, and they'd be disappointed. It's the last thing you wanna have something on the social media around here about how something like that fell through the cracks. In reference to that, you know, about five years ago, Mr. Buck came in as, uh, the emergency preparedness coordinator. He had a, a little seminar at the senior center. I went to it, thought it was interesting. Since then, we haven't seen him. Now, I know there's someone else in his office now. Everybody can put something together to, you know, come on the council some night and, uh, make a presentation of what's new or, or everything, and, you know, anything they, they can offer to us. Yeah, I'll speak for, uh, among the House committee, but speaking as a citizen in reference to, you know, Big Y has actually moved up their single bag, uh, eliminating the single bag to August first as opposed to January. But the other thing on the, this is a week ago Saturday's paper, was about the simple recycling and, uh, Milford has adopted that. Did you see that, Mike, at all?
I didn't see it.
Yeah, well, what they did, and what's interesting about it is, first of all, I think you're gonna, I think you're gonna get it passed. It's, it seems like a, a win-win. But, uh, they had a couple of options in, in Milford, and I think, I think the, uh, the municipality picks up the trash, meaning they have their own, and I, I'm not advocating that, don't, don't get me wrong. But what they have in the trucks is a tablet, so if a guy goes down the street, he reports back to the office that there's only six orange bags out on so many streets. So it's, i- i- in coordination with that, in return, simple recycling, instead of giving them twenty dollars, they give them forty dollars a ton. So it's a little coordination process. But to go along with that, which is even more interesting, uh, looking ahead to our contract next year. Milford only picks up the recycling bi-weekly, every other week. That means the contract as a whole saves a lot of time and effort as far as sending the truck out. That would be a good thing to remember when our contract comes around next year. And if you really look at it, I know, I'll speak for myself, but in the dead of the winter, how often you put your recycles in? And there's nothing in there that's gonna be smelling or whatever. You could probably go January, February, and March by putting it out once a month.
I couldn't.
Saving a little bit more.
I couldn't. Mine's pretty much full. It'd be overflowing every other week.
And your recycles?
Yeah, recycles. We, my recycle, my recycle's filled up more than my trash is filled up.
Yeah, sounds right.
I know, I know I couldn't make a month. I know I, I couldn't make three months. It'd be overflowing in the yard.
Well, you're only one person, sir.
I guess that's, uh, that's, maybe I should tell my wife to stop buying so much.
That's all. Thanks.
Um, it's about our Milton Avenue. In an effort now that Franny's gonna do the pink bags, I understand. Have we been making any progress about asking other towns if we can, so they don't have to pick it up with a payloader from the side of the road? Can we just make a trip to another town? Have we worked on anything with North Haven or maybe Guilford for the large trash? If we decide to pay to take it someplace? Remember when we were looking at this option? Is that something you could pursue a little bit more?
Oh, you mean on the bulky ways?
Yeah, because if we don't at least make an attempt to take it someplace, we know where it's gonna be. We've got a lot of country roads, not much room between, a lot of room between houses, and unfortunately, who's as old as fall on?
Guilford's, Guilford's got one you pay by weight, and Branford's got one you pay by weight.
Even Guilford, the transfer station is a way in, right?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure what North Haven or... I'm not sure what North Haven or Wallingford has. I know Durham doesn't have any.
And, I don't know, is John's putting in a way, a scale?
Yeah.
Even as citizens, maybe John could give us a town rate if he's gonna have scales. Is that for bulk trash, do you know, or?
Not sure yet, I haven't heard.
I know he takes a recycling, yeah.
We could call and find out, I'm sure Mike has a contact there.
Because, I mean, I'm trying to put the horse in, you know, in front of the cart, not behind it, because one month, maybe you're not gonna see anything. Two months, and by three months, you're gonna see mattresses, nice oversized chairs. And you're gonna see the stuff people will not hold on to till the spring. So let's be realistic, not optimistic. It's gonna happen, what can we do to help stop it? I don't think we're gonna ever stop it all the way, but let's, I'm willing to take it someplace rather than dump it someplace. Is that a nice way to put it? Okay?
Gotcha.
And that's not my number, marking number on my trailer, so don't run it. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
You can get an extra tote, I'll order you.
Thank you. I'll order that tomorrow. Next is executive session, motion move into executive session? For pending, for pending negotiations, administrator's contract?
A second?
To include the town manager?
Joe made the motion and I second it. It includes the town manager.
Thank you.